Thank you.
Okay, great, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any objection to approving the sales lease? Hearing none, it's approved. Next item is the G3V rehab. Uh, I guess Nancy, Nancy again? Nancy, G3V rehab?
That's gonna be under the proposals section in your book with this little...
I see it under... It says proposal, yeah.
Yeah, okay, you see where it is?
Is this the unit we already paid eight thousand dollars on?
Um, was it eight thousand? Eight thousand in taxes, was that?
Eight thousand, we've already put eight thousand into it, right?
No, I think it was five thousand in taxes.
What, it was about eight, John?
It was...
We're all being weird, yeah.
So, uh, this one, it says, uh, five thousand for rehab? And why is this? Isn't somebody living in the unit right now?
Somebody is living in the unit.
Okay.
Somebody is living in the unit right now, um, but I guess when he rented, they told him that these things are gonna be taken care of. They have a glass wall, I don't know, they have glass on the wall and it's actually cracked and supposedly they told him that it was gonna be removed when he moved in. And the other thing is, the cabinets are in really bad shape. We did find some cabinets in, um, one of the shed, the top part, not the bottom. So this is just, so this would be removing the glass pane plus the bottom part of the cabinets and installing them.
Um...
And installing the upper that we found in the shed.
But the, this is, you're saying it's five thousand total?
Mm-hmm. That's buying the bottom cabinets, installing them, installing the top one that we found and removing all of the glass. And then after you move the glass wall, that has to be finished, has to be made.
Finish the wall.
Alright, so...
You have to finish the wall, 'cause that glass is stuck to the wall.
Um... I mean, that's a lot of money. He's, he's been, how long has he been there?
He's been there...
No, he's, he just signed, then he's gonna be another year, so we're going into his third year.
Okay, so it was okay for him the first two years, but now he wants this thing back out?
Well, I guess he's, they told him, he's complained about it, this is not the first time.
But I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Well, I mean, there's no way to do it in our house. I mean, first of all, there's only one estimate, you should have three of those, right? And second of all, you know, I don't think this estimate is right, Bob, there is Bob. In that order. So, I mean, you know better, Bob, so you CPA, so we have a contractor...
I'm not good with applying stuff, really.
Well, I mean, just, just, you know, common sense question. This is a contractor, you know, they call estimate, but I assume like it's going to be built, right? It's going to be voiced too.
Sure, oh yeah.
And they are charging sales tax, should it be any sales tax? And top of that, you know, we are in Broward, it's supposed to be the six percent. They are giving us seven percent here. I mean, this is ridiculous, I mean, you know, Nancy, you shouldn't put this estimate at all, I mean, this is a piece of crap.
This is five thousand dollars to remove a glass wall, finish that wall, paint that wall, install cabinets, need to leave cabinets.
If we dropped his rent a hundred dollars a month, would he be happy?
He's leaving.
What's that?
He said if the cabinets are not replaced, he's gonna end up leaving. The cabinets are in really bad shape.
So if he leaves, then he could lose the rent.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I can get somebody else, but I... Five thousand, I think it's, uh...
Hey Sean? John?
Yes.
In my line, if I, somebody wants to turn on their faucet or, um, their G, well, you know, or their shower, I hear terrible noise going through like some water line or something in the...
I hear it too.
I can hear it, 'cause first of all, there's more conversations going on. I need a mic, 'cause I...
Yeah, I have that problem where if somebody is using the shower or flushing the commode, I can hear it in my line, it's like a noise that's going through, it just started maybe a couple of weeks ago. So I, okay, what does that mean? It means that there is a problem with, this lady said she has it, this lady said she has it.
Right. Okay, um, by the way, yeah, Marat was right about this estimate, they're charging us seven percent sales tax. In Florida, sales tax is six percent, Nancy, so there's something fishy about that in Broward, yeah.
John, if that just goes through this like this or not?
Oh, I see, 'cause they're from Palm Beach, but... But they, why would they be charging us Palm Beach taxes? Yeah.
Palm Beach taxes is more.
Yeah, but that's the fair approach, yes. Anyway, um, Nancy, can we get some other, other estimates, this is too much.
I will get another one.
Let's see if we can, if we can start working, um, you know, have our maintenance group start working on it, uh, and do some of the minor repairs or something?
There's nothing.
Nothing?
The glass is, a big glass, it's a whole wall, there's, there's pieces of it.
I did on my unit, just break the glass, you see how?
You can't just break the glass, you have to redo the whole wall, you have to redo that whole wall.
No, no, there's drywall on there, I have same problem, I did...
Yeah, but if you take the mirror down, I mean, I've had mirror in my place and when I took it down, I had to redo it.
You gotta do the whole wall.
You've got to redo it.
And that's a liability for them to remove that whole glass wall.
Yeah, I think, I think it's...
John, could you tell me about my problem, and a few people here have that same problem. It's the line, a water line or something, just started in my house.
That's thirteen hundred dollars to remove that glass and paint the wall, that's insane. And, and come on, that's two thousand dollars to take down the cabinets and put up new cabinets? That's insane. No, no, it says another fourteen hundred dollars for the cabinets. So that's thirty-four hundred dollars for the cabinets, but thirteen hundred dollars... Yes, yes, and two thousand dollars to take down the cabinets and you take about cabinets and paint the wall.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna table this one, we're just gonna sit. No action, no action on this one, Nancy, no action, okay? We, we need, we need, uh, other...
He said he's going to move, he said he's going to move it.
Well, we can't, we can't approve this, it's...
I'll get another one.
Yeah, okay. That's right, it'd be cheaper. Okay, we need, we need a cheaper option there. Okay, next item is E1K, so no action on that one, not table, nothing, just no action. E1K and 3G, concrete work. Looks like the same company, but, but it's not, this one is much cheaper. This one's only six hundred.
Hey John, what, what happened with E1J, okay, they just redid that whole part?
E1K is part of this, this is, yeah. It says E1K and 3G concrete work.
Just did that whole part.
Yeah, sorry?
They redid that whole part. I didn't ask who it was, it was just E1, you can say...
I don't know anything about that. Um, Nancy, could you, could you address this? E1K and the other one, concrete work?
What?
It's the concrete, as you can see, the wall and a column in there. It says that they're...
Can you hear some light, I can't, I can't hear.
It's to repair the concrete wall, as you can see. It's around the river bar? Yeah, it's outside.
Are you talking about the balconies?
Yes, it's the balcony. That's what you hear right there. It's the balcony.
Uh, Marat is saying that's not a bad question, okay, how about the second one, I think it's twelve hundred? And make sure they charge us the proper tax or no tax? Marat is saying the law is...
The second one is also a column on one of the balconies, so you can see the...
But that's the other one, two Z, two Z, that's, that's having a problem.
Marat is saying it's...
Two Z, I know the lady.
Need more research.
Um, Marat is saying that these are cosmetic issues, they're not structural, these, that's, um, these could be handled probably in-house, Nancy, that's Marat. These could be handling...
This is concrete, this is right in the balcony, you have to hang up there, where that tree is the picture, the trees, that's broken, that's concrete. They have to repair that column. You can't climb up there.
Uh, can, can we, whatever company we find for the G3V, can we, uh, see if they could also take care of that? Um, Marat wants to skip it. Let's skip fourteen. Uh, fifteen, golf cart repairs. I think that one also, um, we wanted to, uh, there was a discussion that, um, actually Bob looked at that, sent us an email, that perhaps we should wait and see, uh, you know, once we get the company in place, they might be able to, um, either repair or use their own carts on the property, I'm not sure how that works, but, uh, that, yeah. That does sound familiar, yeah.
We approved two golf carts to be bought, not the last meeting, because the last meeting got totally jacked up. When, when Dan was here. When Dan was here, we approved two carts to be bought.
Right, and one was used by him.
Okay, so let's skip this one too. Next item, back, we're skipping thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, okay, Nancy, no action? No action on thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, okay? Sixteen, backflow replacement, let's address that. Nancy, could you explain that one?
It's the backflow, they needed an inspection and they need to be either replaced or repaired. And this is by our inspection, so inspector. So, um, I guess everybody had spoken about that the best route to go was replacing them, because replacing them is only nine...
What company, what company?
Uh, RD Plumbing.
Oh, okay, so I'm looking at the one that says, um, is it sixteen? There's one that's sixteen and there's one that's five. Oh. Oh, okay, what, what are we, okay, so we're looking at the twenty-seven plus sixty-three? The replace? They, yeah, they messed up the invoice, it looks like...
Yeah, they put, they put the same, I know, I asked separately, then he sent it to me, but it says four, it says four.
Okay, so it should be, it should be ten thousand?
Nine thousand.
No, nine thousand, okay, nine thousand? Okay, so we need to do that for nine thousand. What's the second, what's the second? Oh, nine thousand times nine? Oh, nine thousand covers nine. Okay. So, what's this five thousand, next page? What is that?
This is for the main line, what we spoke about, cleaning the main line, it's five thousand.
Oh, that's, that's the next item on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just take this one. So the nine thousand for the backflow replacement, this is RD Plumbing and Sewer Inc., uh, and it's for the backflow replacement, total nine thousand. Do we have a motion? Rabbit makes the motion? Yeah, the person nine thousand. Yeah, okay. Uh, any objection? It's approved. So the next item is the, is the, uh, main lines, correct?
Yes.
So, could you explain that one too?
These, these are, the main lines here that come from the top of the roof down, they're, they're big cast ones.
Yes.
But when we had them checked, there was a problem and we told them to take a look at it and run on the roof.
The actual area that the water's going through is like this small compared to this, and the rest is just, the go, 'cause it's never been...
It's never been cleaned, so the area of the water going through is probably like this, small. Yeah, it's like three inches. So, um, they're charging five thousand, there's, you can kind of see, there's quite a few lines in each building per building, five thousand, but there's quite a few, actually, seventy-five.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, we're skipping around, 'cause I see the backup is not in the same order as the agenda, that's what I got. So we have actually, uh, pool next, but I don't see that next in the backup. Do we have a pool back thing?
It's right up the avenue.
Actually, wait a minute, that was another one, Bob, right, that we wanted to not do right now? I think that was the, to not approve it? Uh, because Bob, Bob looked at that and he discussed it with Rabbit and, uh, felt that that was not necessary. Correct, Nancy, you had a discussion with Bob and Rabbit?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let's just do that, let's just go in the order of the agenda instead of skipping around. Um, we did backflow already, pool, new backpack lid, I think that should be B A C, right? Um, that, that one, uh, we don't, don't want to approve. So do we need a motion to not approve it? Okay, 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 so Marat, you want to make a motion to not approve, because the determination was made that it wasn't needed, correct? Bob?
Well, I, I happened to bump into Tony today at the pool, he says it's a violation.
What is?
Not having the lid on there.
Would you need it?
Apparently so, is that right, Nancy? And he says he's, I said, well, you know, we just can't take whatever these people say, we gotta push back some, and he says he's been deferring it for over a year now. So, I, I think this is, uh, something that we have to do, I, I don't know.
How much is, how much is this one?
It's two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven? Is it that we're doing for that amount of money? Is it a cover?
It's just the cover and the installation on, by that, the pump area beside the, um, the hot tub by the pool.
Is that a good price?
Seems like a terrible price, but...
Why can't we just take the lid off and leave it off?
Because they want, we would...
It's meant to be empty. All that stuff.
It's a, yeah, but, it's a safety violation, believe it or not, the instructor wrote us up.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, this one is Russell Pools. That's the company that's been maintaining our pools. Um, and so the charge is exactly twenty-one hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, and apparently, I guess we need to do this prologue, so...
Hey Nancy, did you evaluate this, this proposal, and you checked? I mean, we have a contract with this company, right? We are paying monthly fee for them, to them?
Yes, they're the ones that take care of the pool.
So, and you're giving them extra job, they are doing extra stuff, and they still charge trip cha, trip charge of shipping and handling. I mean, we shouldn't pay any shipping and handling, I mean...
This mean, this is custom made, this is, uh, they work somewhere else.
They, they come every month here, I mean, it's, it's insulting.
It's not coming from here.
It's not coming from here, it's, it's being shipped here.
Shipped here, but...
It's a big cover.
What?
He shouldn't have to absorb that cost. Well, then he would have included it in the price, he's just giving it, uh, he's covering the cost that they are charging and to send it to his place so as he can bring it over here.
Yeah, but we, we do have contract with them, they come here several times a month here.
Every day.
Every day, we here every day.
They come here every day.
Yeah.
And they are charging shipping.
Well, but not to ship here, to ship to him, not to ship here.
Ship to him.
So, um...
Well, nothing is free, we know that, but we don't have any, anything to compare with. How we gonna know it's okay?
Well, if you don't, if you don't do it, if you don't take care of it, you're gonna get fined. That's the bottom line.
Well, I didn't, I don't know that one, do we have, uh, did you try that?
She's been keeping the can for over a year and a half, they were both fined away.
Okay, why don't we just approve it?
Did you find already?
Yes, just approved it, yes.
Let's just approve it.
Well, I mean...
Rabbit made the motion, if you, you can vote no.
Well, well...
I'll, I'll second it, so...
I, I'm not agree with that.
Okay, so you vote, you want to be recorded as a no on it, okay.
Well, I'm...
Is that a yes, is that a yes or is it a no?
Well, because... Yes, yeah.
Rabbit made the motion, I seconded it, is there anyone who wants to be recorded? As a, as a no, anyone want to be recorded as a no on that? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Alright, that was, again, that was Russell Pools, the, uh, back lid, backpack lid, alright. So the next item on the agenda, I want to go by that order, is, uh, Grenoble Waste Compactor. And I have to fish around, um, in the backup for that. What company was that, Nancy could give us?
SNS.
Which one?
SNS.
SNS? Oh, SNS invented technology, forty-two forty? Is that it?
Yes.
Forty-two forty, okay.
Yes.
So, what, what's that for?
It's a new compactor, the one that's there is on the left side.
Okay. It needs to be replaced, okay.
Take down, put no more Band-Aids on it.
So it needs to be replaced, alright, so this one is for, uh, SNS, I believe SNS is the one we've used, um, for years. Forty-two hundred dollars for a, uh, replacing the, the compactor in the Grenobles. Um, is there a motion to approve that? Okay, Marat moved, and Rabbit seconds. So the compactor, any objection? It's approved. Next item is the clean, okay, now we can go to the cleaning of main water lines, which was out of order, okay? So let's do that one next, I believe that was... Okay, uh, this is five thousand dollars RD Plumbing and Sewer again. And, um, Nancy, could you explain why we need to do that again? That's the ma, the main water lines?
Those are the main lines, they're, they have never been cleaned, but this will be done from the roof down.
And what will be the benefit, what will be the benefit of that, what's the benefit of that?
It's clean.
Mike, 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 Mike.
It'll be clean, the cast...
Mike.
The cast iron is big, and the hole right now is like three inches, so it's full of go, completely.
Go to each building?
Each, each building. Then according to the plumber that came out, he said they've never been cleaned, those main lines have not been cleaned.
Why not?
I, I don't know, I guess they never made the decision here to clean them.
Poor leadership. And, and if we can get the water off the roof faster, that's a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
Right, so this is five thousand dollars, um...
It's per building?
Per building?
What I can say is, we don't have to do it all at once, they can do one building, the most important ones, the ones that really, well, they all leave them, to be honest with you, but we can, we can choose however you want to choose which building, we can do one per month, or we can break it down, you know, one...
Well, why don't we just, okay, why don't we have it in order, this one in order, we, we have buildings number, let's just do them in numerical order. But, but, what, how many do we approve now? The first, two, first three, first four, what?
Did, did we get a couple of competitive quotes on this?
I mean, I think that...
I'm a little nervous, I didn't know, I thought it was five thousand for all of them, it's five thousand per building?
No, because there is, there is... There's like seventy-five lines, there's seventy-five lines in each of those rooms.
In each building?
In each one.
Four annual system clean buildings, drain cleaning, seventy-five, set up on the roof of each building, it's a half cable machine, that's what they use the jet. And what they do is, they bring the downline in each vent stack, so they basically send this jet down.
Okay, two things, does Doug, does Doug know about this? And maybe we should get another quote. And, uh, one other thing, um, if, which building is really having the, the problem here? Like, I know I've heard a lot of problems with the Orleans and the water, like if this helps part of that, uh, maybe that should be the first building, but what, what caused this to be, uh, to be brought to the forefront in the first place?
Because it was never done.
He, there was a plumbing issue on one of the buildings, I can't remember exactly, but when they went in there, that's when they said, "We need to go and take a look." Interlock.
Was it interlock?
And there's no pressure.
And when then they said, "We need, we need to find out for, you know, how are the main lines stacked?" So that's when they went up to the roof and that's when they saw, when they looked at it. They actually took pictures, I sent pictures to them.
Does that create the noise, does that creates the noise also, um?
Yeah, you might, might.
George, hey George, let me, let me ask you a question, George, I mean, you've been here for, for so long, have we, haven't we done this before?
No.
For last, uh, seven years?
No, 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 never with you.
No with it, why?
We did, we did only one week, it wasn't necessary, we got backup, we called a company, he's cleaning it up.
The drain line.
But charging what, charging how much?
Two hundred, three hundred, depending what, what size.
That was twenty-five years ago.
But that was just, that's just a small area.
If nobody, if no one in here has never had a plumbing problem, you would know what this woman is talking about. And I've lived here point three years in my unit, and I have someone to help, and they told me personally, then eventually you guys are going to have a problem here, because the main staff has never been cleaned. And everything from our individual units, whether it's our AC units and our sewer system, it's all backing up into the main, and, and there's nowhere for it to go, that's what's happening. There's nowhere for it to go.
What I'm saying...
It should have been done, being done on a regular basis, but as George just said, it has never been done.
No, no, that's, that's true, I agree with that, but, but those, those pipes are cast iron, and forty-something years old.
But it's concealed, I mean, I'm already getting...
No, no, I had a problem too, they're talking about the jetty, you know, they put the, you know, pressure water, it may, it may, you know, that, that, that's close, the, the pipe can be damaged. So we gotta make sure they are, they are doing right thing, or maybe they are doing, you know, the worst, you know?
Um, yes, let's, uh, let, let's, okay, this is a very large, obviously a very big ticket item. Um, it's five thousand per building, that's a, you're talking, you're talking sixty thousand dollars for the property. Uh, so I think for something that that's, that that's such a big ticket item, I think we need more than one bid. Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
Sometimes you gotta pay to fix something. This was a bit on, it's five thousand dollars per building.
Better now.
I have a problem with, with all this roof, because it wasn't across it for all these years, I have it, it's also the hallway. Sometimes you gotta pay to fix things, that would cost five thousand, thousand, ten thousand dollars.
But we don't, we don't know, we don't, we don't know, because this is, we only have one, we have one bid, no, I know, right? But what I'm saying is that... I think, I think if it's a sixty thousand dollar item, we're actually required by statute to get three bids. Or, well, I could be wrong about that, 'cause there is a threshold, it may, it may be above that, but anyway. Uh, even if we're not required, I think if it's that much, we should get at least two more bids. Okay, so please, so, uh, Nancy, um, I guess a motion on that would be for the main lines, uh, and Rabbit, do you agree that we should try to get two more bids? You want to make that motion, okay, so Rabbit makes a motion to obtain, and at least two more bids? You wanna make that motion, okay, so Rabbit makes the motion to obtain, and at least two more bids? What, what do you mean, like different solution?
Well, I'm kind of nervous, those pipes are so old, you know, the jetting thing, it may, you know, damage, damage to the pipe, you know? We can do worse, we could do worse, you know, instead of repairing something. The best way is change, you know, the PVC or something, plastic.
Did that show up during the forty-year reserve?